Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our January 8th, 2024 Select Board Meeting. I'll call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM if everyone would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll start with public comment this evening. Per the Select Board policy, public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between citizens and the Select Board. It is the citizen's opportunity to express his or her opinion on issues of town business. The Board may respond to a public comment by taking it under consideration when deliberating on an agenda item or referring the item to the administration for appropriate action or response. Public comment shall be for a period of up to 15 minutes, with speakers being allowed three minutes to present their material. Is anyone here for public comment? Nope, okay. We're going to go out of order and go to our consent items first. We have a grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to the Police Department in the amount of $36,475.94. A donation from Lowell Five in the amount of $3,000 for the senior center. We have a grant from the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association Risk Management in the amount of $10,000 for updating the security system at the youth center. And we have a donation from the Board of Library Trustees in the amount of $50,000 to the Stevens Memorial Library for renovations to the public bathrooms.
I have a motion that we accept the grants with letters of thank you to those donating.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you to everyone for the donations and all the hard work. They went into the grants.
We'd like to thank the library trustee for their generous donation because now we can move the public bathrooms ahead. We'd have to wait a few years for that, so we appreciate their generosity.
Yes, no, that's great. I know that the public will be very grateful for that. Alright, so... Did Kathy want to talk? Kathy, did you want to say anything? No, you're... okay. I just want to make sure. Then we will go back to Item A under new business, and we'll be voting on the town clerk fees for 2024. Is there anything... the don'ts not here, right?
No, Madam Chair, as you remember, last year, we had an article at Town Meeting that requires you and allows you to set these fees annually. If I remember correctly, we actually had kind of conflicting language that said that you set the policies, but then it was also set them in the bylaw, so that was a cleanup. We're not recommending any changes to the current fees this year.
One thing, same, the same price.
Same price.
I should ask one question. When setting the fees, if you know the answer, does this compare favorably to other powerful towns? Is that kind of how we go about it, or...
That's typically what she would do. She does, just runs an analysis. We had some conversations with the A, B, C, C about some of them. But at this time, the town clerk didn't see any reason to make any changes.
I'll move that select board approved the town clerk fees for 2024 as presented.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we'll move on to Item B. We have Phyllis Jones here to talk to us about the, some pending legislation.
I warned you last time I checked in with you guys, I'd be back before you a little bit more often. Let's start with the Commission pulled a bunch of legislation. It is by nowhere ever considered to be inclusive of everything we can find that could be helpful to the population of the town of North Andover specifically as it relates to those who might be considered disabled. But these are the ones we've found thus far, and we wanted to bring them to the town's attention in the hopes that perhaps maybe the town might be willing to provide some sort of guidance to our legislative delegation about supporting this legislation because we found as a commission that it might be supportive for those residents of North Andover who might fall under this umbrella. I know that I submitted information about roughly 12 bills. I can either have you folks come back and ask me, or I can just disseminate the information. Madam Chair, how would you prefer we do this?
Do you want to give us an overview of them?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, and I'm just taking it in the order that I have it in front of me, which may or may not be of any particular order that you have it. So, the first one we found is Senate Bill 1227. It's the Workforce Recovery Commission, and it looks to the hiring and retention of inclusive workforce in the wake of COVID. One of the things I myself, as a person, have seen around town, and I'm sure a lot of other people have experienced this as well, is you go into small businesses, and they either aren't open the hours they want to be open, or they're not servicing their customers as well as they'd prefer to because they can't get the people to work, or they're not paying enough wages, or the workforce isn't there. And one of the things we also know on the Commission is there is an extremely large amount of people who fall under the context of disabled who might not otherwise be able to work, except for perhaps part-time jobs in local community areas. And we thought that something like this would be beneficial because if we can find a way to provide people with the opportunity to work who want to work, but for they might need some additional assistance, then that's something that the state can then look into and look forward and see if maybe we could put more people to work who really want to work, but can't because of something holding them back. The next one was Senate 1265, an act to increase substance use prevention and awareness and reduce overdose. This was actually put forward by our State Senator Bruce Tar. And in review, it says it's amending by asserting substance abuse as a disability. Substance abuse has been seen as a disability with the Veterans Administration for several years now. And I think it's high time, and the Commission thinks it's high time, that the state recognize that as well, especially in the wake of COVID. We've seen all sorts of things in terms of substance abuse, in terms of mental health concerns, coming out of COVID. And anything we can do, I think, now that we're getting back to a pre-COVID sense of normalcy, to be able to assist those people come back up to where they were beforehand. The Commission just feels that it is important to get that to that point. The next one I have is Senate 1271. And it's an act relative to fetal opioid drug exposure. And we're asking you to support this bill because what, the purpose of this bill is to attempt to keep children from becoming victims of substance abuse before they're even born. And so, it's to help ensure that mothers get the medical services that they need so that they're not passing those types of issues on to their children and hopefully not becoming overdosed to begin with, if they're needing other services as well. Senate 1273, an act relative to the mental health of children in schools. That's probably the biggest problem we're having these days, is mental health with our children. I can tell you from my own perspective, as my own two children are both suffering from mental health issues fallout from COVID, being in, working from school remotely for the year, year and a half, all of our kids had to. And they're all coming out of it from different perspectives. But the point of this bill is that mental health of a student should be treated the same way as a student with a physical disability. So that it recognizes the fact that if the mental health is considered an actual disability under the DSM and recognized that way for services, that, you know, you would give the same camaraderie to a mental health individual, what we call silent disabilities. You know, it's easy to see a person walking in who maybe has a mobility disability. But as I've said to you many times before, I have epilepsy. And unless I disclose that to you folks, none of you would have any idea. It's a silent disability. At least for me, it is. For other people, it isn't, but for me, it is. And I think that taking, I, the Commission thinks that taking more affirmative knowledge and pushing forward on the silent disabilities to provide more services is really what is missing right now. This is Senate 1237, and also it's Sister Bill, House 1999, an act relative to student mental health. All this includes is that if a school is going to issue a student ID as they recycle the IDs and issue new ones, and the new IDs come into effect, that it includes information about a suicide prevention hotline. To just put more information in front of these kids so that, you know, hopefully they never do, but if they ever in that thought process of, "I just want to," they'll have some information hopefully right at their fingertips. House 1979, an act establishing a child and adolescent behavioral health implementation coordinating council. In reviewing this, the idea is to set up a new subsystem to establish a council basically on adolescent behavioral health to advise the governor. Several of us on the Commission either have experienced firsthand or through other family members, mental health in, mental health in general is lagging in terms of services that people receive. Children usually get okay services, adults usually get the bulk of services. Adolescents are in this gray area, and they're lacking services completely. And again, we're trying to bring more light on the silent disabilities that so many residents you wouldn't even know are facing. And those are the people we're trying to step up for today and provide more assistance to. H3939, an act relative to the well-being of new mothers and infants. This would create an electronic format to put more information into the hands of the medical community about perinatal psych to support services and support patients. Unfortunately, how many times have we turned on the news in the past year, year and a half, and we've heard, you know, a mother who postpartum depression, hurt herself, hurt her child, unfortunately murdered a child or murdered herself, something that no mother would want to do. And this is to provide more information to the doctors so that they're aware of it. We actually recently had on the show a guest maternal mental health matters, if I'm remembering the name of the guest properly. And their whole point is to put services together so that people are aware of, you know, hey, are you thinking about fill-in-the-blank, something that might be hurtful, that's really based more hormonal, and I hate using that term, but it really is hormonal based upon the fact that a woman's body is going through this while she's pregnant or postpartum so that doctors can better see what's going on, people can better understand what's going on. I got a lot of information, a lot of paperwork that I donated or received and then provided to the police department to disseminate to the community so that these doctors could have posters, cards to give out to people. And I hope that the folks at the police department are putting that out there. I know just for myself, when I was talking to my own doctor, "Hey, are you aware of this?" They had no idea. So, this would make it more, the more information we can give to doctors, the better off they can then treat those people who might need that assistance. Let's see, the next one. H1591, an act providing protections against predatory guardianship. I don't think I need to go beyond saying Holly Montgomery. She was, she was in protective guardianship, and if there were certain protections there, she would have been safer. And what this does is to make sure that the, the person who has a lower capacity level has the same legal representation and that they're aware of discussions in the process and what's going on around them, because these things are, it's about their lives. You know, you can, you can decide for yourself whether or not you want to work, where you want to work, if you go on grocery shopping today or tomorrow. And there are people out there who have to have other people make that decision for them. And a good portion of the people who make those types of decisions are above board. They're good people, they're doing the best that they can. But every so often, you've got somebody in there who's like, "I'm going to be so-and-so's guardian," and then they're going to take advantage of that person. And we want to make sure that, again, these are still sometimes silent disabilities. Sometimes they're more, you know, sometimes they're not quite as silent, but to ensure the fact that people who are under guardianship are protected and that they're able to see that their best interest is put at, put at the heart of everything. H1485, an act relative to authorizing supported decision-making agreements for certain adults with disabilities. That's a mouthful. Basically, what it is, is if you're the decision-maker of somebody, you might not know everything out there. You need somebody to help you figure things out. This is something to assist, to provide services to that decision-maker, to help them figure things out. But it doesn't take away from what the decision-maker has the right to say and not say. So, we, again, focusing in on the silent disabilities, thought that that would be something that would be beneficial. There are plenty of parents, siblings, children, all of which who have guardianship over a family member for one reason or another. Sometimes it might be mom has guardianship over her father because he has Alzheimer's or dementia, and in order to ensure that, you know, he gets the care he needs to, but she might not know everything that's going on. It gives her some additional opportunity to get some more resources to help. Because, I mean, I can tell you, just going through my own personal stuff with my son and trying to navigate the system for his special needs stuff, I'm a lawyer. I do a lot of this, you know, as part of my daily bread. And I'm sometimes sitting back banging my head up against the wall going, "What do I do next?" And if I'm at that place, imagine the person who does not have that type of experience and background. H74 and her sister Bill S34, legislation on digital governance, broadcast cybersecurity, emerging tech, and cable television. This bill, on its face, is fantastic because it ensures that people who have a financial need to access to the internet would get it, such as children in a school system, people with disabilities who don't have enough finances to pay for services. And let's be honest, if we knew, if we learned nothing else out of COVID, we learned everybody needs accessible internet access. The concern we have, and I put this in the memo that I submitted to the town manager for your review, the concern we had when we looked at this was that the legislation wasn't detailed enough about the resources provided. You know, we don't want it so that the person who's able to pay gets the 5-gig speed because they can pay for it, but the state is only allotting 12-meg speed, and you can't even download a document for something like that. So, we would ask that the Select Board actually ask the legislative members to look into the resources provided, whether or not, you know, detailing who would be eligible, what is eligible. And it would also be important to know about whether or not additional cell towers and reliable high-speed internet service through a disability point of view is there to ensure that all their needs are covered if they're going to be getting the service. Because there's no point in providing the service if it's not going to provide the daily necessities of being able to have that service. And then finally, my personal favorite. H4161, MassAbility. This town adopted the name Commission on Ability Assistance unofficially seven years ago. Two years ago officially. Thank you again, Madam Town Manager, for helping us with that. We changed our town charter so that we were no longer the Commission on Disability Issues. We were the Commission on Ability Assistance, focusing on the fact of it's not what you can't accomplish, but what you can accomplish and what assistance you need for anything and everything else. Well, the governor has decided that she wants to name the Mass Rehab Commission to MassAbility, which I think is fantastic and falls in line exactly with what North Andover has been doing themselves for the past seven years. So, I would like to also, or the Commission would also like to request that the Select Board request of the legislative delegation that they support H4161 to rename the Massachusetts Rehabilitation Commission to MassAbility, to more in line with what North Andover's been doing for the past seven years themselves. And that's a mouthful. Do you have any questions of me?
I have a recommendation, just because that was a lot, and very helpful. And knowing that today we had the 9C cuts come down, and the supplemental budget was just passed, and we're still waiting for guidance on how the emergency funds are going to be spent, it may be a good idea to invite our legislators to perhaps our first February meeting so they could actually hear from you about these bills, you could get information from them, and perhaps we could dig into what those 9C cuts are going to mean.
Ooh, can I come too?
Of course. But it might, it might, that might be, that might make sense. Yeah, it might make sense just so you can kind of, they can kind of hear from you.
I think it would give everybody a chance to read through all of the information.
And I do have on my handy-dandy little iPad, I can always send you, would you like me to send you all the legislation?
I actually pulled it all into a Google Doc today, so I can forward it.
You can disseminate it that way.
I can, yep. And I actually highlighted the changes, so you'll be able to easily find them. But that might be, that might be our best bet. That way, we can kind of have a dialogue.
I think so.
Sounds like a reasonable path forward.
And, and if you do end up doing that, if you could just let me know, because I'd like to let the Commission know, we have a meeting coming up a week from Saturday. So that if the Commission members specifically as well are aware, you know, of it, if they want to attend.
We'll issue invitations to find the next, one of our next meetings at work for the legislators, and then we'll let you know which one it will be.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Does anyone have any current questions for Phyllis?
How did you come up with this list? I mean, there's so much legislation out there, there's so many bills. Did you go through them all and come up with these, or how did you come up with this?
I had a rainy Sunday where I had nothing better to do. And I just, I combed through what was, what I could find. And I pulled together some, and I said, you know, you guys, you have other stuff you want to also see happen. This is by no means a comprehensive list. This is what I found, these were the committees I looked at, and these are the committees I'm going to keep my eyes on because it just made sense.
So, most of these have been referred to committee. Do we know if any of them are coming up for vote, or?
I don't, they're all in hearings.
They're all in hearings.
If, if they've been referred up to committee.
They're, I believe they're all in hearing, well, they're all in committee. None of them are in limbo. They're all in committee. They might be in limbo in terms of whether or not they make it through committee going on to the next step. The only thing I heard for certain, I believe, was, I think it was the Senate who voted to approve MassAbility at this point. I could be wrong, but I believe it was the Senate. I don't foresee that as becoming an issue from a personal point of view. It's changing a name. But it hasn't, it hasn't gone to the House, and it hasn't had a full vote, hasn't gone back to the governor for signature, so it's still out there. But a lot of these bills are in committee. They had hearings, I was noticing several of them had hearings back in October even, and they were still sitting in committee. So, the memos that I provided to the town manager actually also had, as of last weekend, when I drafted everything, had the committee chair of who that particular bill or those particular bills are also assigned to so that if you should choose at some point, at least as of last weekend, you'll know who to contact in terms of if you wanted to send a memo of support to the committee themselves.
That's a lot of work, Phyllis. Thank you. And you continue to do a lot of work for the town, so we really appreciate it.
Believe it or not, this Commission post has gotten me through some very hard times myself. So, it's kind of a give and take, if that makes any sense.
Glad to hear that.
Thank you. I'll see you all soon.
Alright, we'll move on to Item C, which is our vote to approve the fiscal year 2025 to fiscal year 2029 capital improvement plan.
Thank you. So, based on our calendar, we do need to vote the recommended capital improvement plan that was presented to all of you at our tri-board meeting. Candidly, there are two items that I do think will end up being an amendment at some point. One is a software change in IT that's around $90,000. And another one is due to an issue we're having with the fire alarm at the high school. And so, I envision we'll have a capital item for that. But I don't have it totally yet, so that's why you're not seeing them. So, we'll vote it, and then perhaps I will be back with two additional small items. They, neither one of them are a huge number or would require any changes to any of our funding sources, but they are both in my head right now, so I didn't want to not mention them.
So, I mean, that constant beep at the high school will go away finally.
I can't guarantee you any peeps are going to go away. Right now, we do have a plan in place that the high school is no longer being evacuated, and there is a detail so everyone is safe all the time. But long-term solution to our 10-year problem would be great, so we're trying to get there. It's a lot of collaboration. So, I do envision that you'll see some amendments as we move towards town meeting.
Any other questions, comments on the capital plan?
I just want to say thank you to whoever, whoever played a role in putting together that, the presentation, the online interactive.
It's amazing, right?
Couldn't have made things any easier.
I was going to say the same thing. I think people really would, should go out and take a look at it and get an idea of where the money's going.
That was Lynn, right?
Very, it's called ClearGup, but it is very clear and very transparent.
It's great the way it's broken down, like, everything about it is so user-friendly.
You know what's great about it is that once the program, so it's the same thing we do with our benchmarking and with our, basically, our budget generally for transparency. But this program, once it gets past the town meeting, for the bigger, any project, we can now create a project page. So, it will just have everything in one place rather than having a million different projects pages, which is...
It's really great.
So, yeah, we're very excited about it. It's the same platform that we're using for the budget now. So, we're excited to have things be so streamlined.
Madam Chair, I move the Select Board adopt the FY25 to FY29 capital improvement plan as presented.
A second? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Just want to thank you for all your hard work and all the department heads, and it's a lot of, I know it's a lot to put together, and you guys are so focused on maintenance and upkeep and making sure that, you know, nothing lags behind, so.
It's a good team.
Much appreciated. Alright, we are...
They only knock down Drago behind the scenes.
Behind the scenes, it's all like, we're all put together by the time it gets us, yep. And I know you all work together to make sure the priorities are...
Yeah, I mean, it's actually interesting collaboration, and people do kind of say, "You know what? Yours is more important than mine," and it's nice to see.
Which is wonderful, yeah. That's really nice. Alright, so we are going to move on to Item D, which is a request from Tina Klein of the Black History Month Planning Committee to place banners on the poles at the town common.
To just set the table on this, and then maybe we can invite them up to speak. So, as you know, this was on our last agenda. We had removed it to move on to this agenda. A reason for that being that the banners, as well as the common, both kind of fell in the same situation that we were in with the flag policy, meaning that at the time, we were just currently allowing anything to come forward, and we, under our current policies, really didn't have a metric to make any denials. And so, realizing that, we want to make sure that we have protections in place so that we wouldn't feel like we got any predatory or unwanted applications in the future. So, one of the things that we're doing tonight is we have the banners on, and then we have another policy change, discussion about a policy change. Even if the Board perhaps isn't 100% satisfied with the two policy changes, I'd advise you to vote them, and then we could revisit them. But I think having something in place right now that's more restrictive is just safer for us as we move forward. So, we can kind of talk about the Black History Month banners first, and then talk about the policy changes second. But this application came in, as well as one other application, which is for a wellness event that's in April, came in prior to us putting a moratorium on accepting our... Event that's in April, came in prior to us putting a moratorium on accepting applications, so both of them will need to be considered under our old policy.
Thank you for bringing us all up to speed on that. So I'll invite Tina up to tell us about the banners that we've all enjoyed the past two years.
Well, good to see you guys again. So this is our third year for having the banners. Our first year, we commissioned eight banners from Elevated Thought. Anybody who's been in the youth center has seen the murals in the youth center, those are also from Elevated Thought, so they do beautiful work. So the first year, we had eight banners, and it also coincided with the 375th birthday of the town, so the lamp posts around the common were not available for the month of February. So working with the town manager, we found locations at municipal buildings and were able to have them on display throughout the town as a really creative kind of Plan B. So then last year, we commissioned eight additional banners, so we have a total of 16, 16 banners plus our, what we call our program banner, which is just the red and black that says, "North Andover celebrates Black History Month." So we have, I think, probably eight of those. Last year, we were before you and got permission to hang them around the common, and we are back to make that request again this year. One of the things that came up during the, the way the permit request gets rooted, rooted around to different departments, is the public works asked that we be responsible for both attaching and removing the poster with the QR code to the lamp posts, and we did that last year, so we're definitely, you know, on board for doing that again this year. And then I'll also say that the theme, every year, there's a theme that is selected for Black History Month, and this year, it focuses on African Americans and the arts. And so we're in the process of putting together a series of programming to have throughout the month that focuses on various aspects of the arts. So, and we will be sending out invitations shortly, so you guys will receive invitations to our events. So, yeah, that's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
I'll just add that we're lucky enough to partner with them, so Sarah currently is working on the website, she told me she was working on it this weekend. So we're, it's really been a wonderful partnership. And we've all enjoyed, I think, the work, and the library usually does a lot of programming along with the Historical Society.
We get a lot of positive feedback from residents as well, who, you know, as you're walking around.
Yes, it has been, it's been a very collaborative effort from, from the inception of the idea, really. So it's been, it's been great.
And Tina, just so everybody knows at home too, when you click on the QR code, it brings it to the website and it gives a history for each flag, correct?
Right, yes, there'll be a QR code on the poster at each banner, and there is a short biography for each person that's on our website.
Tina, I have a question for you. Originally, when this started, we talked about trying to get our, the Black citizens of North Andover through all the years and focus on them. So I was, not that this gentleman was a citizen of North Andover, but I was wondering, did you ever consider, or maybe it's in the mix, I tried to find it, was the first Black senator who happened to be from Massachusetts? And was wondering if that was one that you would consider, Senator Brooke?
I don't know that it was that, one that we had considered.
It wouldn't be this year, if this is, the theme is artistic this year, unless he could be known for the art of public speaking, I don't know. But I was just, just curious.
Well, I mean, I'm happy to write that down as a possibility, because, you know, there are additional, there are additional poles that we could, in future years, kind of keep expanding the list of people that we lift up, and that would be a great one to add to the list.
Thank you. The artwork is spectacular.
It really is. It's so, so well done.
Yeah.
It often takes your breath away. I did love it, I have to say, to be honest, that we had, for the year, that we had, you know, concerns about getting them up on our, around the common, but I really, Melissa came up with the idea, is putting them, you know, in the driveways to the school, and I think there was moving them around a little bit so each school could take advantage of it, but I, I love that we brought it to the kids.
We do have, we, the library has Phyllis Wheatley, a Phyllis Wheatley banner, we do have an extra banner of Elizabeth Freeman, and we have talked about putting that up in one of the municipal buildings, maybe at town hall. And then I've also talked with Kathy Schelp about putting up a banner at, at the scene, yeah, at the senior center. So we still need to figure out which one she might want so that we can get it printed. But, but yeah, having it in build, having them that accessible and in buildings, I think is also adds to the project and gets more visibility to the project.
Yeah, there's plenty of opportunities to expand in future.
Right, yeah. I don't have contacts within the schools, so that's, that's probably a department I don't do as much outreach.
We can get you in contact.
But, you know, if we wanted to also invite the schools to have, to have reprints of the current, current people that we have on banners, it's an easy thing to do now that we have the artwork to get another copy of the banners made, so.
That would be, and then you could rotate them every year, I think, you know, it would drive interest for the kids.
Sure.
And also, maybe just little life stories, like little age-appropriate or reading level appropriate books that the kids could, you know, put, put together or could be put together for them, and I think that would be great as well.
Yeah, I know that when.
Because they're not going to really be doing one of these with mom's cell phone, you know.
I know that when we came up with the list of people that we were honoring, one of the things that, that Kathleen did was look through all of the library books and puts together a display within the library that also helps to, to focus on and kind of highlights books that are associated with some of the people on the banners. So that's, that's good too.
You mentioned some of the upcoming programming, is there anything that is, maybe is in collaboration with schools or an opportunity for the schools to participate in some of that age-appropriate programming?
The programming that we have in the works, our kickoff event is a, an evening of gospel. We have, none of them are, well, the one that I would say is, is, we, our, our final event on February 25th is a visual arts. We have two artists that are going to be coming in and helping us to put on an event where, where people kind of think about community and what community means to them, kind of using some poetry from African Americans and then visualizing what that community might, what community means for them. And we'll have, we're, we're holding that at the library and we'll have all of the art supplies to, to work on a project like that. So that is one that is probably closest aligned to being family-friendly, if you will.
Any other questions, comments?
Oh, just looking at the banners, and they really are, and the website's very well done.
Sarah has done a fabulous job, yeah, she's amazing. Yeah, she is.
So are you still having the program that you had last year that was at the Historical Museum?
Our kickoff last year was at the Historical Society. This year, our kickoff is at the North Parish Church, and the, because the gospel choir event is, it's, the space is more conducive to.
The acoustics are probably better and everything.
And, what's that? Yeah, it's a larger space. We've, we're also been in touch with Brian Fraser, and he knows about all of our events and the ones that he is able to broadcast, and there are a couple of artists which we have gotten permission for them to also be filmed and rebroadcast, so some of the programming will show more than once on cable, on our cable channel.
Thank you so much, it's a lot of work that you all have put into this, so we really appreciate it, and the community benefits for sure.
Okay, well, thank you.
I'll take a motion.
I'll move that the Select Board approves the application from Tina Klein to install banners at the town common from February 1st, 2024 to February 29th, 2024.
You get an extra day.
Wait first, it's 2024.
Too much.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, so that brings us to a top, a discussion about our policies and the changes that we may want to make.
Okay, so as I mentioned, these may be more restrictive than you decide you want to be, but I'd rather be more restrictive and then move towards less restrictive if we can. So the first policy is an amendment of the Select Board Policy Manual, and it's creating a new section, so Article 2, Section J banners. We don't currently have a policy that governs banners, what we've done historically is just gone and used the use of common application because we didn't really have another way to kind of move it forward. Interestingly, our bylaws do state that no street banners are signed, shall be permitted unless authorized by the Select Board, so it's kind of surprising to me that at some point, a policy wasn't created, but here we are. So basically, we start, just as we do with our flag policy, by saying that our banner hanging poles located on public ways or on public property are not intended to serve as a forum for free expression by the public, but rather as an expression of official town sentiments. And then we move forward the same way we do basically with our current flag policy, which says that the only way that banners will be allowed is in conjunction with an official town event or ceremony and at the discretion of the Select Board. And then it reiterates that we require ownership of any banners that we hang on our poles. And then the second change is amending the Select Board Policy Manual by completely removing Article 2, Section A, Use of Town Common in its entirety, and replacing it with a new Section A, Use of Town Common. And so it goes on and uses some of the same language that we currently have in our current policy, talking about how it's a public park, that it should only be used for passive recreation, defining what passive recreation is. It reiterates that same language about the historic town common not being intended to be used for a forum for free expression, but rather as official town sentiment and in conjunction with town events. It reiterates the old language we had, that it does not apply to informal, non-repetitive gatherings of under 20 people. And then it goes on to say that only official, official town events and town-sponsored events shall be allowed to be held in the common. It says that we will annually review a calendar of events and may add official town-sponsored events at your discretion. Every January, the manager would survey committees, commissions, and departments to create a calendar for the year. Town-sponsored events shall include events sponsored or co-sponsored by North Andover committees, commissions, and departments. So for instance, the menorah would still be allowed because it would be co-sponsored by the festival committee. The Christmas tree lighting would still be allowed because it's co-sponsored by the festival committee. Today, I had Joel LeBlanc from Veterans call the flag of honor and explain that they would have a collective application. However, events that are not town-sponsored events would now have to go to a separate or different entity. So in the past, when the town common has not been available, for instance, this year, when we had the flooding and the farmers' market, the merchants' association was not able to go in the common, they went to the high school parking lot. We have used the field behind the youth center, that's under the discretion of the youth center director, people applied directly to him to use that. So this really puts additional protections in place that the historic town common would only be used for events that have town sentiment or that are official town events.
There would be an avenue for the Fall Festival through the merchants' association to be co-sponsored and die the festival.
What about something like the St. Michael's Parish picnic?
It would have, that, so that would have to not happen there any longer, I would say.
They actually had it right at the church.
Yeah, this year they didn't have it at the common.
No, they did not, they had it. And I think it might have rained the day of it was at the church.
We ran through every event we could think of that actually applied for an application last year. When we did that, we found that there were some that did not, that just had an event. But we did, we went through every one that we could think of. It was funny, because there was people in the room, they were like, but this is about, me and Laurie are like, wait a minute. But we went through everyone that officially was documented, and all of them, we felt, our, you know, our usual annual events could easily fall within one of our departments or one of our committees or commissions.
So like next year, if Tina comes to us to do the banners, would that be like under the cultural council?
Well, it could be, or it could be, you know, the town manager's office, or because we already work with them so closely on the website, and we actually were co-applicants on the cultural commission application.
Perfect.
So, you know, like something like that would be very simple.
So it's an avenue.
Yes.
And how about, a couple years ago, we had a beer garden out there on the common.
So that event, I think likely would not be able to happen there. Unless it was, for instance.
I know.
She's cheering, or, or, no, the common, the festival committee wanted to take over some, or work with some of the different groups that have formerly had events. I think what the danger is, and what, the danger that we've been seeing, is that you may have, we may have people who want to have events in the town common that don't all post things on the town common or place something on the town common that doesn't represent the way the community wants to put forward their sentiments.
Makes sense, makes sense.
So, you know.
We need those protections.
I guess my question is, now we've protected the common, how about those other avenues? Are they protected?
So we've had a lot of conversations about this, so instantly, recently, we had an application, we had, and this is a sad situation, we had some high school students who wanted to put out a box at the library to collect items for food drive. And at this point, we felt like we didn't have a good policy in place, and that's not a policy that would even come before you, right? That actually would be a policy that would come through the library of board trustees or through our office, but we're working on kind of cementing all of those so that there's metrics in place, so that there is an avenue to do the things that we want to do, that we want to be able to support the community and be the type of community that we want to be, but that also protects us when we have something come forward that perhaps we don't want to bring forward. So we're working with our different departments on that.
Does that also include the school department? Because a lot of requests go through them.
So we are not working with the school department on their use of building policy. The, the individual principals typically are in charge of the individual buildings and make those determinations. You know, so we're purely handing, handling our buildings, but, you know, we'll be sure to share what we end up doing with everything.
But just so that it be known, and I know I've said this in previous meetings, that the one, the one park that came with my words, protective covenants, is Patriots Park. It is for quiet enjoyment only, and a lot of people in town don't know that because that was put in place years and years ago. And actually, the police department shooed them off if they were chipping, you know, playing a little golf or football games and things. It is literally, was donated to the town by the Stevens family for passive, quiet enjoyment. So it cannot be one where you could have a pickup softball game or something like that, or, and it's part of the conditions. But, but again, I think there's still a lot of groups that don't know that and just come and play games and things like that, which they're really not supposed to do. So that's kind of, other than, of course, we do our Veterans Day and things, which makes sense, it's called Patriots Park. But just so let that be known, that that's the kind of a little bit, there's clear rules on that park as to what's allowed.
We have no policy on that park, right, to allow anything to happen, other than that's it, right?
I would imagine, yeah, you have to follow, you have to follow the deed, and it was a very, it's a very interesting deed because it was all handwritten. I have a copy of it, it's just amazing, the penmanship is just phenomenal. But, so that's the only thing I like to let people know, because then they get upset when you're, they're told no, and there's good reasons as to, as to why. The only other thing, and I've mentioned this before, we have to be somewhat careful or understanding that we're 12 months out of the year, you only can accommodate so many groups, and we really, it would be very difficult to say yes to some groups and no to others who have good reason, and that's, but, I mean, I am supporting this tonight, I get it, but I think in future planning, we've got to figure out a way. And what I had suggested in the past, and I think it could be really fun, and other communities do do it, is they have a heritage day where the common could host people of all different heritages, cultures, music, food, crafts, some wonderful stories, but we can save that for another time, but I think that could be a way of, you know, making sure that.
I think that part of the reason we're doing is, is so that we're not up against that whole, I mean.
But still, there's only 12 months, and some of those months are what, you know, for the menorah, for the tree lighting and so forth. But still, there's only 12 months, and some of those months are, you know, for the menorah, for the tree lighting and so forth and so on. So I think we've just got to be really sensitive that it becomes an inclusive group and not an exclusive group, so.
And this gives us more control.
Yes, much more.
More mature though.
I'm trying to run it through my head, how anything could slip through, right? We all, we all know we want to try to avoid what we've gone through.
Exactly, I think we've all...
We've all lived it, and I think, I'm just trying to make sure that, I agree, I think it's right to definitely make it more within our control. I'm trying to think of what I'm not thinking of.
So there's always risk, right?
Right.
And I think, but I think one of the difficult things is, there's two ways we could go right now, right? We could say, "We're never doing anything at the common ever again," right? But I don't think...
I don't think anyone wants that.
No, and I don't think that's the kind of community we want to be, right?
Right.
So there's always going to be a certain amount of risk that's going to be inherent in creating these policies.
Yes.
Because you can't control a future board, right? Right, everyone changes.
No risk.
We can't have no risk, and we can't not do community events that really bring everybody together and enjoy, you know, that's what we...
I'm trying to think of loopholes.
Always, always, and that's why I try to be more restrictive.
But then again, there's costs, and there's real, and I know this because of what I've been doing for years with wreaths and flags and all kinds of stuff. We have one bucket truck and one operator. So if the bucket truck is down, or the operator is sick, or takes another job someplace else, and we haven't found someone else, that can pose a real lot of problems, and it's, it can be expensive, especially if you could get a bad patch of weather, and next thing you know, you were almost forced to be paying overtime, which I don't think any of us want to do, because that becomes an added expense. So these are, it's not for discussion tonight, it's just to kind of let it be known that as we move forward, we've got to, we've got to put a lot of this in place. And that's why I thought, as many communities do, you know, along the Charles in Boston, they would have Heritage Days. They have Heritage Days, I believe in Newbury Port, in Salem, Mass., that maybe we should just have a collaborative of just learning about so many different cultures.
So just as a reminder, we will revisit...
But we're not doing it this year, but it's just something that we all need to work on so that we, again, are inclusive. And I think it's all educational when we learn of different cultures, and I think it's great fun for all of us, so. But we've got a job ahead of us.
The exception is that this is a nationally recognized month. Like, this is not, you know, the entire country celebrates Black History Month, so.
That's a good point.
So I just, I think as a reminder, the plan for the policy manual is for us to review it every year when we reorganize, right? And so that'll be great for you and for me, right, and us, because we'll be able to say, "Oh, remember we went to MMA class? And they said this, this is new best practice," right? But also, it's kind of a reminder, you may have new members who may say, you know, "I don't like this policy, we need to revisit this policy." And so that gives us a chance every year, annually, to say, "Let's review these again and make sure they're still the way we want to operate."
Or there might be some opportunity to think about, well, okay, we've had certain groups for this amount of years. How about we let somebody else have this month, and we'll let the next one come then. Or like what we did before, we brought it to the schools and things like that. I'm not suggesting that at all for this year.
And now we come under reviewing the calendar for January and see what events are coming forward.
It actually would be helpful for us too, because we'll have the list of events in advance. So we'll be able to say when things are, which will be helpful, and I think will make us all operate a little bit more smoothly. So we're looking forward to that. As far as cost, I think this actually, the new way of doing this will be probably more expensive for the town, because in the past, if we had events that we were not co-sponsoring, we would require them to do the trash cleanup, or we would require them to purchase the toilets. Now, we'll be doing that, right? But I think risk analysis-wise, it's, yeah, it's worth it.
Well, true, and co-sponsoring, doesn't those mean 50/50, or so we can, I'm sure each event can stand independently and look at costs that way? You mentioned another application that is in under the old policy, is that a banner application or use of...
It's not, it's a use of the common application for a homeless event. The application is not complete yet, it has not finished all of its check, street, parma heads.
Okay, alright, alright. It was submitted complete, but it's not...
It's submitted complete, but it has not processed correctly yet.
Is there any thoughts about putting timeframes on the banners? Or is it because it's coming from the town anyway, meaning like, it would vary?
I think it would depend if we started to get more applications that had value.
And we're not getting applications. Yeah, so we'd have to come from somewhere.
Well, probably there's people that don't want to do it because they're a little afraid after what has recently happened.
Well, not applications, but things going through the calendar.
Your application at all.
Farmers market's more than a month, right, that they use them for.
Yeah.
So we start to run into conflicts, you know, to make those decisions.
I would think that people who want to hang banners are going to let us know pretty far in advance, because banners are expensive. And they can meet our metrics for the size in the correct pools.
And they have to have a co-sponsor of some sort.
So I think we'll probably have pretty...
But the good news is, and I believe it's the same banners that, that we have done for the 350th and the 375th in the millennium year, they last. They really, really, really last, unless you get a lot of windstorms and cars roll over them as they come down. Then, then you've got some problems, but they last.
A lot of them end up in our office after they've flown away and covered over, and they still look good, so it's fine.
If there's no further comments, I'll take a motion.
I'll move that this Select Board approve the amendments to the policy manual as presented.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Thank you for going through them and tightening those up.
Much appreciated.
Appreciate it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Madam Chair, I was just reminded by your favorite fans at Nine LaBelle Road, Damaris Mouse, that I sat in Senator Brooke's chair when we had a family trip to Washington, DC. There we go, see?
Fun fact.
And actually, I have...
It's good that you have those banners.
I have those fans, yes.
Providing immediate feedback and information.
I was just, I was telling Melissa in our office, I have a very good friend, Linda McHugh, Linda Ruthier-McHugh, who was good friends with Senator Brooke, and he would stop by her house with, you know, with Linda's husband and kids, and she'd make him breakfast every now and again. So it's kind of, she knew him well, so kind of a, it's...
Full circle, kind of.
Yeah.
Alright, we'll move on to item F, which is our appointments, and I'll hand it over to our Appointments Subcommittee.
Been a couple of weeks, so... We ought to dig, right?
You want to start?
Yeah, I can take your help. Okay, so Brian and I have been busy interviewing people.
You guys have been busy, you're really clearing the backlog.
Yep, that's the goal. And have some appointments to bring forward to the whole board tonight. We met with Brenton Anderson, who wants to be a part of the Patriotic Observance Committee. I mean, every single person we met was enthusiastic and excited. A lot of them are newer to the area, or they moved away and are moving back. It's just very exciting to me to see a lot of new faces, and the renewed excitement about joining these boards and committees is lifting my spirits a lot. So, that'd be exciting, we met with Brenton Anderson about the Patriotic Observance Committee. And Linda Earl is going, we're recommending her for the Sustainability Committee. Judy Nagrelli, as an official member of the festival committee, though the festival committee would not be the same without her. She's been doing a very important role for the last many years, so we're...
Why, they're making it official, huh?
They're making it official that she...
The help is wanted and necessary.
Yes, part of the festival committee. Chrissy Harical to the Cultural Council, she's very involved in the schools and the, oh my gosh. The schools' version of the Cultural Council where they...
Oh, like the PTOs?
No, where they, they're bombed.
They hedge my council.
Where they bring outside programs into schools, so I think this is like a really good match for her. Harry Fabali is a resident at the Old Center and would like to be named an alternate on the Old Center Historic District Commission. Melanie Allen is also really excited to join the festival committee. I have to say, those are the committees I'm most excited about because we've, I feel like been through a period of time where people weren't applying to be on the festival committee, so...
And we lost quite a few members with the last few years for just health reasons and...
Yeah, sure, it's, you know, people, it's okay.
And it's, you need them.
It's okay, people can, yeah, move on, but it's nice to fill those, fill those spots again. And then we also met with Marissa Valentino, who will be a great addition to the Conservation Commission.
Yeah, we were actually fortunate there, we had met with her, and we ended up having a vacancy pop up, we said, "Perfect, we knew it."
Bingo, right place, right time.
Yeah.
Anyway, that being said.
Well, thank you for all your hard work.
It's not easy, it's fun. Any questions for us?
Any questions? No?
Being scheduled near future, so.
Yeah, we have to do this.
Yeah, yeah.
Then I will take a motion.
I'll move forward. Move the Select Board appoint Brenton Anderson to the Patriotic Observance Committee through June 30th, 2024. Linda Earl to the Sustainability Committee through June 30th, 2026. Julian Nagrelli to the Festival Committee through June 30th, 2024. Christina Harical to the Cultural Council through June 30th, 2025. Carrie Fabali as an alternate to the Old Center Historic District Commission through June 30th, 2025. Melanie Allen to the Festival Committee through June 30th, 2024. And Marissa Valentino to the Conservation Commission through June 30th, 2024.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Other than thank you to everybody who volunteers their time, because it is time-consuming, and we do run on volunteers. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Well, welcome. Do you know what you signed up for?
It's the festival committee, it's fun.
Welcome, good luck.
Alright, we are going to move on to the Licensing Commission, and I will take a motion to open the licensing.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we move into licensing.
I'll second the motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, we are now in licensing. Our first item up, or only item, is a request from Bertucci's for an extension of their liquor license application. Can you just give us your name and chart?
Good evening, my name is Tyler Hensler. I'm an attorney from Upton, Canal, and Devlin in Boston, here representing Bertucci's. Joining me tonight is Joe Enos, the Senior Division VP, and Melissa Cerber, the Divisional Vice President, who is also the manager of record on the liquor license here in North Andover. So, thank you for having us. I am here to make sure the board has two pieces of information germane to this decision on whether to extend our license renewal, so that we can get you the required document, which is a Department of Revenue Certificate of Good Standing. The first one, and I really want to stress this one, just because we cannot get a Certificate of Good Standing from the Department of Revenue, it does not mean that Bertucci's taxes are not being paid. Bertucci's parent company owns several other chains, and that parent company pays the taxes for Bertucci's and all the other chains, so that Bertucci's, and the other lower-tier chains are therefore considered disregarded entities for tax purposes. So this parent company is a national company, and every state has a different way to qualify an entity as a disregarded entity. And apparently, it was filed wrong in Massachusetts. So that is the issue that we're having at the Department of Revenue. And that is what Bertucci's accountants are currently working on to get the right form and get us the Certificate of Good Standing that we are missing.
So, excuse me, this doesn't impact the North Andover Bertucci's, but all Bertucci's in Massachusetts?
Not at all. It is, if any, or, sorry, the licensee in North Andover, which I may or may not own other licenses, I'm not sure. Again, I do work with Bertucci's, but I'm not well-versed with the North Andover one specifically. But I know that some are freestanding licensees and others are more restaurant groups. But to, specific to North Andover, the parent company basically pays their taxes for them.
I see, okay.
So they are disregarded entity, and this is at the IRS level. So, this is all to say, again, I am not a tax attorney, I'm out of my depth here. However, I'm doing my best to explain to you that when they do get that form, and they file the right form to make the Bertucci's, the licensee here in North Andover, a disregarded entity, it's not as if they're going to get a tax bill that they will have to pay to get the Certificate of Good Standing. The Department of Revenue will, once they get that application, say, "Oh, their parent company's already paid for them, taxes are already caught up." It's just, we need, we need that designation as a disregarded entity.
When you first said that phrase, disregarded, it sounded like enemy. And I'm like, when you first said it, and I'm thinking, whoa, this is serious.
Entity, sorry.
Yeah, no, I caught it later on, but I thought it was funny.
I apologize.
No, it was kind of funny.
The second piece of information is that Bertucci's has filed for bankruptcy in November of 2022. It's my understanding that there's an automatic stay on alienating any of the bankruptcy assets. Again, I'm not a tax attorney, I'm not a bankruptcy attorney. But it's my understanding the liquor license is one of those assets, and that Bertucci's is, they have a plan with the bankruptcy court, a plan of reorganization, which is the end goal of bankruptcy, to make sure all the creditors are made whole. So it's important that the assets are available, and if something affects that, the court, the bankruptcy courts, which are federal courts, they take that seriously. So with those, I am here to request an extension of time to provide you that Department of Revenue Certificate of Good Standing while this is being sorted out. The company, I believe, in a letter to the town, has requested 30 days. I am here to ask for as much time as you can possibly give, 45, 60 days, just to ensure that this gets sorted out. But we're happy to take any questions, and thank you for your time tonight.
I'll take that. Any questions?
I guess my, oh, go ahead. What is the process, like where are you at in the process?
So I personally am not in that process. It's an accounting firm, and Joe, you might have the name, but it was in the letter that was provided to the town.
Purvis Gray.
Yeah, so they're their accountant, and they deal with the Department of Revenue. I am told that, you know, every time they submit what was asked, they come back with more requests. So that's why I'm asking for that extended period of time beyond 30 days, just because with the way the Department of Revenue is now, I mean, I work with them for separate issues. Whenever you close on a liquor license, you need to provide a Department of Revenue good standing for the seller, and it can take, it can take some doing. So with that in mind, anything beyond the 30 days, we would appreciate. But I can't answer that, I apologize. But I'm told we're close, so.
So, I mean, the good news is, you meet every month. So I think you usually, you usually could do 30 days, and then we could revisit and a month to do additional 30 days.
When is our closest meeting to February 5th?
Which one is 7?
7.
7th, so I would maybe suggest we extend it to February 7th, and then have them, or maybe do we need to be on February 7th?
February 7th.
February 8th, right, right, and then have an update.
That's 33 days, that's great, thank you.
Not 130. Are they current on all local, like local?
Everything's in order except...
Everything's...
So it sounds like it's an administrative defect that needs to be...
I would say so, yeah. Again, I don't know the details of getting that disregarded entity, but it lays there and not in, you know, delinquent tax bills.
And the bankruptcy thing that you told us about, that's totally different, right? That's just...
Totally separate.
What you're suggesting there is that the license is an asset and it needs to be retained, is what you're saying.
That is my, again, so this is actually the second time that Bertucci's has filed for bankruptcy in the past five years. So it creates a lot of confusion. This is not the first board I've had to be, I've been in front of to explain this, to help understand this. The one in Wuber, and I had to do it as well. It just complicates things, it's not something I like to do, and come in, come in here and, you know, kind of tell the Select Board what is and what is not an asset in a bankruptcy proceeding that you've just learned of 10 minutes ago. But it's not my favorite thing to do, but it is something that I feel that is relevant to your decisions and, you know, any discussions you have. So I, again, any questions you have, I'm happy to answer to the best of my ability.
Yeah, I just don't see how it's relevant.
That was basically my question.
It's not really relevant because, you know, I'm sorry, go ahead. I mean, it's, if you don't have a Certificate of Good Standing with the state, then we can't issue a license. So I don't see how that asset is relevant. Maybe it is relevant in some way that I'm not getting it, but...
I will say that, that the Department of Revenue Certificate of Good Standing, it's not required in every municipality. So the fact that it's required here is particular to this town. So the fact that it's required here is particular to this town. So that, the bankruptcy complicating things is why I brought it up. But, yeah, basically, if you were to not issue the license, that is where the bankruptcy would become relevant. It'd be, well, now the asset is out of the asset pool, and, but.
For a reason.
That makes sense.
And Lori, we have a certificate of good standing from the Secretary of State. Correct them, or no, we do not?
I think we do. I'm on the website right now.
We could be, yeah. I guess my only question is, in the interim, as we're extending.
They filed everything with the Secretary of State, so there wouldn't be an issue. If there isn't one in the file, I don't see one online.
We could file the annual reports if there's any missing, but.
Easily.
Yeah.
No, it was filed, so a certificate of good standing from the Secretary of State's office is just, is an easy thing to get. If it's not there, I'd have to check with someone with a file.
I think you're right, Lori. It's pretty easy to get.
And in the interim, while we're in extension period.
We'll get a legal opinion about the bankruptcy.
Well, I'm more of the actual, the license itself from a liability standpoint right now. The license has expired, or is it indefinitely extended? How does that?
So you extended it, and it's extended for thirty days.
Yeah, okay, so that's, so it's automatically extended, okay, great.
The thirty days might help you get it sooner, too, because there's a clock ticking away.
I certainly hope so. Again, I am not working on that, but I will relay this information and hopefully get this sorted out.
Bertucci's is certainly a very well-liked venue in this town.
Well, I will add.
And we certainly don't want to see anything.
Right, no, I will add that locations like the North Andover one, I understand is very popular. And it's locations like this that are so important to a company that is trying to become, you know, a relevant, you know, business citizen again, coming out of the other side of this bankruptcy. It's the locations like this that really, you know, actually produce revenue that are important to a company.
Well, it's a good message, too.
Exactly.
When it's open and thriving, so.
Exactly.
Okay, any other questions, comments? In that case, I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move the Select Board acting as Licensing Commission to extend the deadline of obtaining a certificate of good standing for Bertucci's liquor license application until 4:00 PM on February 8th, 2024.
A second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye.
I think I should, I'm sorry, I should amend that motion that also, that we have an update from the Bertucci's team on our February 7th meeting.
Hasn't made any objections?
I'll second that amendment.
Any objections? Or all those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and if we get the certificate of good standing in the meantime.
Send it.
All right, I will take another motion.
Motion, move out of licensing.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Thank you. We'll move on to the approval of our minutes for December 11th and December 13th, because everybody had a chance to review them.
Madam Chair, I move approval of the minutes from December 11th and our joint meeting on December 13th.
A second? A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And now we will move on to Select Board updates and comments. Anyone?
I'm guessing show manager will also say this, but thank you to DPW. Kind of busy.
Thank you in advance for the rain that's coming.
Let's hope that the rest of the week is calm. But, you know, I know police and fire and DPW have been very busy, and as always, we're appreciative.
But I would also say, and I'm sure this has probably been said out, especially to our senior citizens and people who might have some mobility issues, that if you need something, don't stay home in silence. Call. Please call. There'll be people who are willing to help or run an errand or whatever, so please, or if you don't have heat or electricity, please call.
I would also piggyback on that, that people should use the report-it.
Except usually the older people don't have it.
I know, but.
They can call.
They can call, you can use the report-it, but posting it on Facebook doesn't help us. So if there's a problem, like, we are certainly, yeah, like, we are very willing, the departments are very willing to help, but you need to let us know, and that's a great tool that we have. Anyone else? I was just going to mention that the plastic bag ban has gone into effect in town.
Sure has.
So remember your reusable bags? I was short. I had four. I really needed six.
The paper bags are not great, but the reusable ones are good.
I went to Market Basket on Friday. It was my first time without them, without the plastic. It's kind of interesting, because it's like, people always want to go back to the seventies while we did it.
Well, that's just it. You have to hug them. It's like, that's the problem.
Support the bottom.
Yeah, and they still rip, unfortunately.
Those bags are great.
What time did you, I walked out of Market Basket on Friday. I was too busy.
It was so, I should have known when I went in the parking lot, there was no parking, parking along the side. And then there were only four carriages at the front of the store available, and then to check out the line was just like ten or twelve deep.
Pretty good show.
We'll be able to kick back to the seventies. All the kids will be able to cover their books that they don't use anymore.
It's open to go back to books.
Can you draw on them?
Yeah, you color them, yeah. And then, I'm sure Melissa will mention the Employee of the Year, John Borges.
So well-deserved.
He's such a great guy and so, works so hard, so we're all very excited to honor John this year.
And he's a legacy DPW guy.
His dad worked here.
His father worked, yeah.
Very lucky to have him. I'll pass it over to you.
Okay. I'll just reiterate the thank you and also add dispatch in there as well. It's been a, they were very busy the last twenty-four hours. We've had all kinds of strange situations. We had a car rollover, but we were in a meeting today. Lots of weird stuff. So they've been very busy, and we're very thankful. They'll continue tomorrow to open up some of the side streets, and we'll certainly be cleaning the off-catch basins, getting ready for Wednesday's rain. Once we see what things look like after Wednesday, we'll make the decision on whether or not we need to haul any of the snow out off of Main Street. But I'm thinking we may get enough melt out.
It's going to be fifty degrees.
Hopefully not too much melt.
You know, it's piled high, so we'll see.
And rain.
We also wanted to recognize Officer Seaweed and KP Neal, who in the middle of the night the other night, well, we were all sleeping, found a missing child, and so we want to recognize them for that. Great work. The CPC applications are due February 2nd, and we just want to remind people to update or sign up for our Reverse 911, Smart 911, if they're not already. It's a really good way to kind of keep in the loop about what's going on, and we don't send a lot, only when it's actually an emergency or you actually need to know something, but it definitely is an effective tool. And as far as the report-its, I read all of them, so definitely send them, and don't feel funny about updating or sending a second one. It does help us kind of realize where things aren't working, so it's definitely a good tool.
Can we mention also that if they're finding on their tax bill some discrepancy or evaluation that they, it's the end of January.
Yeah, for sending, for your chance to file an abatement.
To file an abatement, and if you miss the date, you miss the date.
There is no.
That's state law.
Yes, there's no further ministry of remedies if you don't apply for your agreement in time.
And what is the official date? Is it the last day of January? Sorry about that.
No, it's okay. I think it's February 1st, but with.
Well, it depends. If it's the last day of January at the stroke of midnight, you're out of luck when it turns to February 1st.
I don't really particularly know what the abatement application date is.
The 31st is a Wednesday?
It's, I think it's.
February 1st.
February 1st.
Oh, it says typically.
It typically is, yeah. But sometimes if it falls on the weekend, it can be all screwy and.
It's probably why I keep saying.
We've got a leap year. I mean, we could go anywhere this year.
No, that's the wrong way.
Other direction.
Just, if you have questions, you should really start making your phone calls now.
Get them before the end of January.
Yeah, after January 1st, before February 1st.
And again, it's not, even if it's a mistake, so it's not the town, this is coming, this regulation is a state regulation, that's the day.
There's nothing we can do after that.
So start now if you have some questions.
Yep, and sometimes you're improperly classified, or you have an issue where your valuation may have changed, and you think you're overvalued. It never hurts to apply for IV control.
And people will help you at the assessor's office. You don't have to do this all on your own.
People are always nervous to do it, so it's a good thing to do.
Yeah, but you don't want to pay a bill that might be too high.
We haven't mentioned it yet tonight, recycling. Are they having extra help still through the whole month from holiday backlog, or?
They feel as of Saturday that they are, were caught up as of Saturday. We had an extra truck here Saturday, so all day. To be fair, since Saturday, I actually haven't had a report-it on recycling. I did have one on trash. Since Saturday, it's Monday. So I felt good Sunday that I heard we were caught up.
On vacation.
It felt good on Sunday that we were caught up. I actually have not received any today, that they were behind today.
And were we on cycle today with them?
We were on cycle today. Nothing was delayed. So they did have an extra truck in at the end of last week, because we had a lot of complaints last week, starting on, it was Janice. Janice cursed us. She said, I didn't think recycling's going well. And I said, I haven't got any complaints, and then all of a sudden they all came. But they did have an extra truck last week because of the, they were backlogged. So we're going to fresh start this week, so we'll see how it goes.
It would be amazing if they came on the day they're supposed to. That would be like.
We do have a meeting on.
Hitting the log.
We have a meeting on the books with them. They are, have agreed to have a training for our office and the DPW admin's office on their new software, so that we could directly go in and do the reports, and also so that we can see the pictures of the ones that perhaps are having, they're having issues. So some of the issue ones, for instance, if they know a house always has recycling out and there's nothing there, they'll take a picture now to show us that the bin actually wasn't out, which, having worked in trash for a very long time, is something that actually happens. People forget to bring it out, or they're late, or whatever, and then they call and say, you didn't pick it up. And so they're, they have cameras on their trucks now, and they're taking pictures. Or they have some people who just have not broken boxes down, are just like lining the whole street with them, so they're taking pictures of those to kind of show us why they have the backlog. So I'll be interested to see once we get into the software what we're actually dealing with, but it will be educational, I think.
How is the snow going to impact that pickup today and the automated of the?
Well, they have an extra truck in right now that's not automated, that they're helping using to help.
I've seen that.
I'm saying the snow banks have just got to be.
Yeah, they have an extra truck. Then, most people, what I have found, most people do is that they put them at the bottom of their driveway, facing out, so that they actually can still grab them. That's typically what you see. But yes, it does make it much more problematic when there's no banks.
And I would say when I drive around town, at least a third of them are pointing the wrong direction with the bins.
I actually see that more, though, after they've been, like, I really do feel like most people.
I was saying, in the morning, when I go out, I can point to a couple of houses where it's still like, I know it's the wrong way. I hope it gets picked up.
Or people put them on the wrong week.
That, there is a lot of that.
It'll be, once we get the software, I'm very interested in seeing what, how.
They always stickers too, don't they, for the?
They always stickers. They also have a video that they've created. I've seen that they're ready to put out for the summer, so.
All right, sorry, we had a good meeting. I don't want to go back to that.
It's all good. It's all good. So I'll keep you posted on how this goes this week with recycling.
All right. With that, our next meeting is Monday, January 22nd, here in the boardroom, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.